All right, welcome everybody. It is July 19th, 2022. This is the West Liberty City Council meeting agenda. Like to call this meeting to order. We have President Councilwoman Zacharias. That's what I'm gonna guess here. Councilwoman Martinez.
Here.
Um, not President is Councilwoman Karen McFerrin. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? And that passes three zero. The agenda is approved. Derek, can you come on up? We'll do the approval of our new officer. So raise your right hand. Merci, afternoon. Hi, Derek Holmes.
Hi, Derek Holmes.
To solemnly swear that I will support.
You solemnly swear that I'll support.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as police officer.
Discharge all duties as police officer.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
For the city of West Liberty, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As of now or hereafter required by law.
Good job, welcome. Good memory, too. We'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve the consent agenda? Any discussion? Oh, there's a mayor, please, the treasurer's report in your votes. Any questions or anything for anybody? All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? Yeah, the consent agenda has passed three zero. Next, we'll move into a public hearing. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing? Any discussion? Jose?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
So the public hearing or the public hearing is open. Dave and Lee?
Public correspondence with regards to the budget amendments.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So?
I'm sorry?
Well.
Okay. Oh, and then, okay. So no more discussion? Okay. Councilwoman Martinez? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing. And for for this next resolution, we can vote, but we will still have to continue to, we still have to read again. Is that correct? Oh, for the, the different one. Okay. And so we'll move into Resolution 20220705-02. A resolution to amend certify and approve fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget amendment.
Move to a please.
Second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor and Council, as you see on the budget amendment certification there, what was the explanation of changes? This has to do with garbage rate increase that we recently have done and expenditures for the garbage until we, this would also include a grant that we received for Ryan for a mini pitch project for the Parks Department. The Parks Department also suffered a loss with the lawnmower and due to parks not being able to be ordered for a long period of time, Director Keith went out and did find a used mower with limited hours on it. So for the price listed and then that service is with regards to what we had approved earlier this year for the police department purchase of teasers and cameras. Councilwoman Martinez, will you vote?
Yes.
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 That passes three zero. We'll move on to item six, vendor voucher claims. Vendor voucher claims list one in the amount of $588,854.87. There will motion to approve. Oh, sorry, and also vendor voucher claims list number two in the amount of $240.
We can read them, take out the, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah. Do you have a motion to approve? Oh, motion to approve the both vendor voucher claim list? All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? We'll move on to item seven, public comments and our correspondence. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. If you'd like to come up, please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to more than two minutes, no more than two minutes. Are there any public comments tonight? Is there any on Zoom?
Madam Mayor, no one is motioning for on Zoom.
Right, then we'll move on to city council, public comments or correspondence.
I just wanted to acknowledge a lot of the discussions online about the water rising. I'm assuming it happens quite often during the summer, but I'm not sure if there's anything from city that would explain an increase other than people watering their lawns and, yeah, things like that, so. Which a lot of the committee members also noted that they had done a lot of extra activities as well, so perhaps that was the reason. But wanted to remind people that you can always call and get your meter checked if you feel that there is a misread for that.
That's correct. Councilmember Dinning is, so the city has not had a water rate increase. It's just due to consumption. And, you know, sometimes we don't realize that during the summer months, you know, again, maybe you realize it when we're outside. Make sure you're turning your hoses off.
Yep.
And we're not continuing to run. Other things too could be if you're doing more laundry, taking more showers, things of that nature that we just don't think about and that can cause the consumption. But as you stated, if you notice that you have an increase higher than normal, then contact the city and we will re-read meter. The meter can be tested and there's steps that we can do. If it's also a situation where you do have high usage, we can always, we always welcome you to contact us so we can set up a payment plan if needed before notice of disconnection. So we have options.
Yeah, and then I think last summer this happened to us too. And Sherry, you had, you had suggested putting like food coloring in your toilet bowl, in the back of the toilet bowl to see if there's a leak. And there was actually, yes, there was a leak in our toilet and we fixed it. And so that helped us considerably. We had, I mean, we didn't hear any leak, you know? We didn't think there would be a leak, but obviously that was the case and that helped reduce our water considerably. So that might be another solutions for some folks who are thinking there is no leak, but maybe just put some food coloring in that back tank and see if there's some leakage there.
Yeah, a toilet running can actually cause a huge increase in water usage and it doesn't necessarily mean it's spilling out on the floor. It may just be constantly running. And that's something that sometimes it goes unnoticed. So that's the easiest way is to put that in the back of the tank. And then if it turns the water blue or red, whatever color you're using, you know that you have some sort of leak in there.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilmembers, I think that brings up that we can share over to our communications director and we could have our water superintendent work and maybe provide some educational material just to help the community understand, you know, maybe what to look for.
That's a great idea. Thank you. If there's nothing else from city council, me, city manager and our city clerk.
I have received correspondence since last night.
Have nothing for chat discussion. Great, thank you. So move on to old business. And this is one we can't vote on or we can.
You can. This is, this is the resolution that was passed, but the ordinance, which is next, which at the last meeting, we waved and did the second, third, and we actually even have four votes. Even though we had a vacant seat, it's still required foremost to wave. So the attorneys just recommended that we redo the resolution tonight. So we just have three, we'll go and just do first reading on the board.
Okay.
And then we'll bring, we'll bring it back to the next meeting for the second.
Okay, well, that make it so you're still able to do what you need to do on your end?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll do item A, Resolution 20220719-03, a resolution to their necessity and establish an urban renewal area pursuant to section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan amendment for the West Liberty Urban Renewal Area. Do we have a motion?
We have a motion. Second.
Okay, any discussion?
But just remind everybody that this is the property that's located at the southwest corner of Maxon and Columbus.
The entire property, you know?
Yes.
Yes. That passes three zero. Move on to item B, ordinance 0120220719, an ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in the July 2022 addition to the West Liberty Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section 403 dash one or point one nine of the Code of Iowa. Second. Put a motion for first reading by Councilmember Martinez, threatened by Councilmember Dinning is. Any discussion?
Yes.
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 It's three zero for that one. Move on to item C, Resolution 20220719-04, a resolution authorizing the city of West Liberty to enter into an agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority on behalf of the Iowa Community Catalysts in an mediation grant program in the amount of $100,000. We have a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
This grant, Ken Brooks, Director, we, Director, we lead, worked with Frank Wagner and then the Girts on the property. It's located at lot 15, 15th third. And that grant is for the departments upstairs as well as the offices per se, so we check if they're back. Just based, can zip to submit a grant. Get a hundred thousand dollars. Much like Joe had done, I think, on the previous building that they started down at one of.
Thank you. All right, ready for vote?
Yes.
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 Passes three zero. Item D, city council discussion and appropriate action on economic development matching funds grant. Application 20220719-01, Robert and Nicole Rock property located at 314 North Calhoun Street, Nicole Rock Dance Studio for facade improvements.
Just, let's know that Nicole did follow the application. She had all the necessary paperwork. She did get to two bits for the work. And the majority of the work is going to be tech pointing on the building to keep its structural integrity. And then they're going to be re, they're going to be redoing the doors on the front of the building. And everything seems to be in order. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Yeah, that passes three zero. Move on to item E, city council discussion and appropriate action to appoint a city council member for vacancy until January 1, 2024. Do we have the motion to approve? Just discussing or?
I don't think we have to make a motion. I think it can be a consensus and it comes back in a resolution.
At the next thing.
So do we want to open the discussion? Is anybody having thoughts or want to talk about what we were thinking?
Yeah, I mean, favor was nominated, the candidacy of Vanessa Espinoza for the position. And my big argument in February is that she was part of the process last November. She put her name on the ballot and she got a considerable number of votes. So from there on to here, she has shown interest in the welfare of the city. Maybe she's highly qualified.
I think it's tricky because I think we're in a very special circumstance where we can actually consider what applicants have have submitted to us. And whereas, you know, during the campaign, of course, we can go out and talk to people and things like that and have our two-minute answers during the forum. But we don't, as a council, don't really get to see resumes. We don't get to see some of their past history and, and some of their experience with our city council like we were able to in these applications. So, you know, on one hand, Vanessa is an amazing community, community member, very much contributes to the community, has a lot of support through the election. But on the other hand, Ashley Smith has done a lot of reporting at city council meetings in the past. Also, I feel she's been a more of a longtime resident here in West Liberty and I, I feel like could bring, also bring a very fresh perspective to council. So I'm, I'm pretty torn. I had, I had sent my, my comments to Councilwoman McFerrin to, to just let her know how torn I was. And I hate that she's not here today to, to comment on what she's thinking. But for, for this position to fill, Councilwoman Veronica's position, I think Ashley would be more able to hit the ground running. And then hopefully Vanessa would also, you know, run again and have that four-year term. Whereas this term would be till January. This is a shorter term for Ashley. I don't have a relationship with Ashley either. I don't know if either of you do, but I think that's important too, just considering the circumstances to start fresh with it, with somebody who can kind of work with everybody and, and doesn't really have bias or, or have any teeth in, in or relationship with anybody. So that, that's my perspective.
I agree with you when it comes to us. Wonderful teacher. A very important member of the community. But when it comes to residency, when I was mayor, how long have you been here?
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
The curriculum that she says is quite impressive. I don't believe she has any particular tendencies against what we are doing here. So.
That's why I said I'm torn. I want.
I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I know Vanessa for a little bit, I mean, the resume is really applications, we also, I know Ashley a little bit too. Another fourth grade candidate and kind of same as Dana, kind of torn because one has a lot of great abilities than the other and he all has things that everyone doesn't have. So, you know, can't put two together in one, but it's going to be a pretty hard choice.
But there is no doubt that it's going to be a hard choice.
Yeah.
But both, both candidates are extremely well qualified for the position. Again, the fact that Vanessa put her name in the ballot last November to me is a qualifying.
It would be, yeah, I mean, we need a little bit of a direction from you folks tonight so we can have a resolution for this point.
Well, I think we have to have Kara, though. It doesn't have to be a super majority for, to fill a vacancy.
Or you actually fill them until.
Yeah. Or to recommend.
Yeah, you can recommend and then we can bring it to a resolution. And then, you know, then it would be a vote by the councils whole. And then that's when it, but you can provide consensus is, if you've come to an agreement on who your consensus is, to resolution because, I mean, we are, we're running tight on time as far as.
I'm going to have a special interview.
No. Nope, it was just this talking and then voting a resolution.
I agree that we, that both would be a really strong choice for, for different reasons. I, just to, to point out to Dana too, Vanessa has spent, yes, a short amount of time here, but she's also taken, hit the ground running and is involved with many, many of our organizations here in town.
Hopefully, and, and the same goes for Ashley. Ashley has been a huge engine and captain, musical education and, and great work. In my opinion, and this is my final, my final intervention at this point, I believe that Vanessa is qualified to be the, to get the position because of her demographics, more than anything. She's bilingual, she's been doing the translation for the index. She's very much involved with the stream cultures. And every other effort that counts to reinforce the identity of the local appeal of some count. And she's going to stay here for the long run.
Any additional thoughts?
Well, we could do like a, so Jose, I think you said you put your book Vanessa up like, and then so Dana too. We want to do it that way and just see what it. Or is there more discussion?
Oh, gosh.
You know, Karen should be involved. Is there the possibility of having a meeting that Kara can attend with us for?
You can set a, a special meeting. Based on my understanding, I mean, council can set a special meeting and as long as we give 24-hour notes as to what is going to be the discussion for that special meeting.
I, I, I mean, I know I don't vote, but I, I would like to hear Kara's thoughts as well just because she's a longtime member of this community. So, I mean, again, that's my preference, but I'm not voting, so.
Yeah, we're sharing that. So the, I mean, we could do a Zoom meeting because Sherry and I are both out. And so if it, if a council, mayor council, you would like, we could set a Zoom meeting to have that discussion through, so you know, it's still a public meeting that we open to the public, post the agenda and that we can have your discussion.
I think, I mean, if everyone's.
I would like to hear what she has to say. Yeah, and she's, yeah, one of the most senior folks on council too. So, because we can, I would have time to, I mean, even if you wanted to have this happen this week, as long as, you know, I could get it posted in 24 hours. Time to do it during this week or Monday this coming. Yeah, this coming Monday. Yeah. Um, should we try to set one now and then reach out to Kara?
I think that would be good if we could set one now.
Okay. What does Friday look like for folks? I'm on vacation all week, so I'm open. I am as well, yeah.
If it is in the afternoon, I'm.
So like two o'clock Friday? Should we try and then see, we give Kara some time after. Let me, let me look at mine. Just, just hold on. Sorry, I shouldn't. Nope, I'm good in that afternoon, so sometime, anytime after two. And then Lee, would you mind?
Yep. Thank you.
And I, I kind of, I, I, I am socially connected with Vanessa and I've worked with her before and I don't, I've never met Ashley too. So that's why I'm kind of, sort of listening to what you folks have to say.
And since we'll be here, I mean, we can, I mean, we can have the, we can set it up to be at City Hall. The chamber is small, but if we're just going to have that only discussion, we could certainly have enough space there to have you. So you could talk face to face if you wanted to. Or do you want to stay with Zoom? It's up to you.
Is it easier for you and Sherry to be on Zoom though?
I'll be here Friday.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we can do both if necessary, but I think face to face might be better. Sitting around the table.
Face to face? And thank you to everybody who applied too. This is great. I'm glad that, I'm glad that we get to, you know, need to have further discussion. So is everyone okay with moving on to new business? Item A, city council discussion and appropriate action for paramedic AEMT and EMT job descriptions.
You have a motion?
Yep.
Description group.
Yep, so. Can we discuss before we have to motion?
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve. No, I said I asked for a motion. I'm just speaking very quietly tonight, so. So I did see these before the ambulance board meeting and had Sandy take a quick look. As is they, the, the only feedback I got is that the under licensing, the unrestricted Iowa chauffeur's class D license within 30 days of hire may not be required anymore by the state. So just when people are applying, just to keep that in mind. I don't know if we need to change it or not. Sandy said she wasn't quite. Sandy said she wasn't quite sure, but she thought that they had removed that restricted, that requirement. And then, you know, I know we've, we've tabled these so many times and there's other, a lot of other things, I think, that fire and ambulance will probably have to add, but we can always update that later if we need to, and I know we need to get these approved, so.
I had sent them out to, um, I sent them out by email to have them reviewed and I, I received no response.
Okay, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's the only thing that I would say is that we double check the, the, if the chauffeur license is required or not. Other than that, I think they were okay. Um, so any other discussion on those? Uh, shall we vote? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, those are approved, three zero. Um, move on to city staff to. City staff, staff discussion with city council on status of the stormwater utility implementation.
Not a mayor council, um, I had Sherry join us by Zoom. I wanted to just follow up, we, um, the city had passed a new utility, the stormwater utility ordinance last year effective July 1. Uh, there were some. Some items that did not, I'm gonna say mesh well with our, our billing system. And unfortunately, it wasn't uh to our knowledge until we were trying to work through the process. Um, so I'm gonna hand it, I just wanted you to know that Deputy City Clerk Crawford and utility billing clerk, uh, Rena Avalos have done a phenomenal job. They, they really have dug in, Rena hasn't even been at utility billing for a month yet. And she, uh, she's been working really well with Sherry to work through this process. The difficulties is it's a brand new utility, so it, and it's not a utility that we can copy and paste from another utility. So, um, and likewise, they reached out to Leo Booley and, and, and had some assistance from his team. So Sherry, if you want to just give them an update and just give them a brief about where we're at with it and.
Yeah, so what we had to do is we had to create the utility itself. Um, when you do that, you have to put in the codes that it goes to. And so we have one section that has two separate breakdowns, one for commercial, one for residential. So in order for us to not have to put about 700 items and manually, we had to find a existing code with our residential to be able to mass upload it. So when that happens, any utility that has a residential water code on it is gonna get that storm utility put onto it. So the way that the ordinance is written right now is not. It's down like multi-residential and then commercial industrial residential together, but our multi-residential properties are underneath our residential section. So in order for us, whatever way we go, we're gonna have to know, because right now it's implemented per utility account, just like our recycling is, which was the intent of it from the beginning. It was intended to go per utility account. Um, and that's what we have it set at, at the time being. With our partial, what we had to do is we had to, again, find another criteria that would fit for something that is metered in order to put that on there as a non-metered service. Then we had to go in and manually input all of the ERUs that we got from V N K. We had to go in there and manually do that for about 300 different properties. So Rena and I worked on it for the entire week last week. Um, with that being said. I believe that we have all of the accounts, I believe that we have gotten all of them. There is a possibility that some of them may be missed and we won't notice it until that billing calculation comes out. So next week, when the billing calculation comes out, Rena's gonna send that to me and I'm gonna look through and make sure that we have that on there. Um, so it's, oh, it's a really big implementation and I just want everyone to be aware that, though, like Lee said, it's gonna need to be looked at because how the ordinance is written doesn't fit how the utility works. Um, so. All I can ask for is just a little bit of patience, because it might take a little bit of time for us to get everything implemented properly. But at this point in time, as far as we know, all the accounts do have the correct E R U and they also have the correct residential rate on them as well.
Sherry, is there anything that residents have to look for on their bills that is new or?
Yeah, so it will actually, on the bill itself, it will state, it will, uh, like on the breakdown of it, you have your electric, you have your tax, water, sewer, et cetera. Down on the bottom of that, there will be something that will say stormwater on it and will say stormwater utility. It will just say stormwater on it and it will, for the residents, it's just a flat fee, everybody pays the same fee. And then for commercial, it goes based on the E R U that was calculated for that.
So with that said, on your agenda, that's, um, we had to have this on here before to update the ordinance. Uh, again, with further discussion with Deputy City Clerk Crawford and Ms. Avalos, I, we all believe that we wanted to, we wanted to walk the walk through it. And so then, once we established the utility, then it would help us better, um, you know, set what we needed to set within that ordinance, so everything is consistent as to how it's been established, so.
And we did work with Chris from V N K, I forgot to put that in there, Lee, that we spoke with Chris on the phone for about an hour. And she did say that there were multiple different ways it could be implemented and we ran through it and based on our, in like on our in-code software, this is the most logical way to do so.
So, and then that's our recommendation is we'll, we will amend the ordinance based on how the utility is established within our billing system. And at the same time, as, that would be something else that we would add to our communication. Um, I'll work with our communications director so we can put up some educational material with regard, since it's been a while since we originally passed the ordinance. Uh, that would make a bring attention to the utility customers and they can understand what that ordinance is for.
Any other questions? And we will move on to item C, set the date to amend West Liberty Storm Water Utility Ordinance for August 5th, 2022. 7:30 P M. Is that Friday? Is that Tuesday? No, I, I'm, my, no.
I may have put the wrong date in there.
Yeah, I think it would be second, August 2nd, because I thought the 6th was the Saturday. So it's the 2nd. Do we need a motion to approve that date or can we just agree? No, we don't, okay.
You do have to have, you gotta set it, because it's an amendment, yeah.
We need a motion to set the, oh. So I'll motion to, to amend on the next council meeting on August 2nd. All those in favor? Hi, any opposed? So now we'll set the date for the public hearing to amend ordinance golf ATV, U T V for August. That would be second as well, at 2022, at 7:30 P M. Is this because of the, the changes at the state level?
Some, and then, um, Chief had, you know, again, Chief had noticed a few things too, I think, from inspection or. And I think he, when he had came on board, he had noticed some quirky things within that, so Chief, if you.
When the new state code came in, it said that we cannot charge for permits, that sort of thing for U T V, A T Vs. So what I would encourage the council to consider is, um, do we still want to do the same protocol that we have currently for golf carts? And keep it exactly the same and just observe the state code as if it pertains to all U T V's, A T Vs? Or say no golf carts and U T V's, A T V's are given a state, but that's what's, that's what needs to be looked at, because currently our policy violates the state code.
Right, and so does our, does, how old do you have to be to drive a golf cart? Is there any state? Um, restriction on that, do you have to have a license or permit?
Yes.
I think it's 14.
Driver by our ordinance, early golf cart, but I think, I remember at the state, is it 18 for the A T V, U T V?
I'd have to double check that.
I think, I think the A T V, U T V have to be 18, under the state law, but under the ordinance was adopted by the city prior to Chief and I, I think it was a licensed driver at 16.
What does affect a prior people that already registered? About to re-register once this passes again?
For, for.
You have a golf cart or. Or a golf cart or whatever, do people, if we switch stuff to people that already, that paid their fee, did they have to re-register their golf cart again?
So when we heard that this governor was gonna be signing it, the city stopped accepting money for all U T V, A T Vs. They continued with the golf carts since that didn't violate the state code, but that's why we need it to review it to decide what we want to be moving forward with. And the state code does say that, I, I'd have to reread it, but it says something to the effect of it's gotta be registered, it's gotta have registration on it, it's gotta have certain safety features similar to the code that we have, but it's now state code saying it's okay and you can't charge. That's why we have to do something to separate it or just remove the, the U T V out of it and leave the golf carts only. And then we can just clean it up to make sure it makes sense.
And that, I mean, um, for. From like what's called Clerksnet, that seems to be what a lot of cities are doing is removing uh, the A T V, U T V and just making the statement as Chief has said is that it'll follow the state code with that and just having just the golf cart ordinance on its own, um, separate from that.
But they, they can still ride their A T Vs, but not on the streets, that's still illegal, right?
No, they can ride on the streets.
They can.
Oh, yes.
Even without lights and.
No, you gotta have.
Equipment.
Okay, good.
Sort of like what we had, but it's now, it's a state code that says what that equipment is, what the registration requires.
Yeah, that's all I care about is that people aren't gonna be hit because they aren't seen at night or.
And the city, um, I think the one thing that the state did reserve for the city, if the city wanted to um, state that they can only be traveling on certain city streets.
Okay.
Um, so if you wanted, then, you know, A T Vs, U T Vs not to be traveling on, you know, other, you know, depending on where you want their main travel to be.
Mm hmm. I think that's silly, who's gonna know exactly what street? But, I don't know.
It, it gets more complicated, but there are some cities that do things like, um, we were just talking about this at the P D, like, uh, in Iowa City, there are certain streets that make a border where you can't ride anything on the sidewalk. But it gets confusing because then you have to figure out where those are, which side, yeah, so, um. I'm happy to answer any questions or meet with you all as we move forward with this, but we do have to do something with it, because currently part of that code is violating the state.
Will you be available during the public hearing?
Um, on that day, I will be coming back from training in Nevada.
Okay.
So I believe I will be back by that time, but if there's need for meeting or discussion before that, then.
So, so are we supposed to decide what the amendment would be or will you?
Public hearing is for.
Okay.
Public hearing, so Chief and I have already been in conversation and so we'll continue. I'll draft a, um, an amended draft for Chief. And again, primarily the enforcement is who, you know, is really gonna drive the bus on the amendment, because it's, it's our public safety, it's our enforcement that are gonna have to do the inspections and. I, like I said, most of my research is just looking to see what other cities are doing and, um, like we said, the bigger part of it is, is just removing the A T V, U T V altogether from.
Okay.
And just moving it to the golf cart.
Okay. Okay.
So we just need a motion to set the amended.
Make the motion.
All those in favor? Hi. Opposed? Yeah, that passes three zero.
I will move on to reports uh from the city engineer, Leo, are you there?
Yes, I am. Uh, two reports, first one is, uh, well, number two. Uh, we did get everything back from the Iowa D N R and they did go forward with basically approving the water quality as well as the casing as it is now. So that's good news for us and what that does is we've completed our report now. We haven't submitted it to the city yet, we will be doing that next week. But the report essentially is gonna say that to, to make that well, a distribution well in the powerhouse, we'll have to build a, a room around it, we'll have to do some things with the SCADA and power and a few things with the pump and the motor, it's gonna cost about $530,000 to get that well up. It's a Jordan well, if I was to build a new Jordan well for you, I'd be over $2 million. So there's a difference. I, our recommendation is gonna be to hold off. Um, West Liberty Foods, as you well know, as I've listened to on this meeting, has got some pretty big plans for their new facility. They have a Jordan well and a Solerian well, a Solerian well is a shallow well, you do not have any potable water in the city. Not that we couldn't do that, but I think Jordan would be better because of your treatment system. Um, so we're gonna say hold off until West Liberty Foods makes a definite decision. What I've he, heard from West Liberty Foods this week, they think that decision will be in early to mid September, when they find out if they get that grant or not. If they get that grant, I think it's a go. At that time, I think you should take a good look at their wells. They are upgrading their wells as we speak today. And they're, they're upgrading both of their wells because they're both kind of needing upgrades. And so they will have upgraded wells and, and they have to do that just to operate the next year while they're building. So you'll have an opportunity potentially for, for those wells. So I wouldn't want to make any moves beyond what we've done now, until you find out about those, because it could be a much better situation than upgrading your, your well in the wellhouse we, or in the powerhouse we've told you. And probably about 15 years is the life of that well. Whereas these ones from West Liberty Foods, you could get 30 to 50 years out of. So there's, there's some decisions to be made. Also, they have a water tower over there that I know needs a lot of help, but there's a potential there too, because the city eventually needs another water tower. We've not pushed it, but probably in the out years. So that's the well number two report we have for today. And then, um, on Maxon and Rainbow Drive improvements, we're essentially done with the civil part of the project. We've, um, gotten information from B H M G, your electric utility consultant. We've incorporated their information and we're looking to go forward. The only thing we really need now is a selection of what exactly the trail lighting should be. And we've given, um, the city manager three or four options that we've looked at. We think maybe a committee meeting with some others involved in the committee meeting to make a decision or a recommendation to council is needed, but I believe we need to get that reasonably quickly because we really would like to get out for construction in the spring of 2023, which seems like a long way off, except power poles right now have a pretty long delay. They're, they're getting a lot better, getting a lot better. I just, we had some in Burlington that weren't supposed to be delivered until January and they just told us today that now they're gonna deliver them in August. So things are getting better in that arena, but still we need to move. So that's, um, that's where I'm at today and that, that, does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
City staff members.
Any questions? The only thing that I would add, um, at your next meeting, we also, we hope to, uh, Ken was able to get another grant for a project over on Spencer Street. Kind of behind Jose's building, behind Weely, uh, they're looking to put a couple apartments above and then a commercial space and down low in the building that sits behind Jose's there on the alley. Uh, we take them at through legal, everything looks to be good. Uh, we do have to put together a, an agreement with, with the developers, but we should be able to sign off on the state portion of that grant and we need to do that for next meeting, we had a, we, we got that about mid-June, we had a 60-day timeline. That's why we kind of pushed the attorneys to get through their reviews, so you'll see that at your next meeting. If you have any other questions on anything, I would like to staff members and try to answer those.
Um, I had a question for Eric probably. I had a question for Eric probably, that your officers got trained to do like salvage title or title inspections?
Yes.
If somebody needed that, would they just call city hall, make an appointment?
Yep, there's a prompt. You have to choose the prompt for city hall and then underneath the prompt for city hall, there's one for schedule for salvage vehicle inspections. Because we now have three officers that are trained, because we were down to zero when Kim took her new position, but we're back.
And does that cost to get an inspection?
Yes, there's a cost. You pay it online. It's I think $50 for inspection.
It's through DOT that they would go. Okay. Thank you.
We also have job postings up. We have job postings for the and then we do have the full-time or part-time AMT AEMTs and paramedics, they're posted and the deadline on it is July 22nd.
Um, committee meetings, the special committee task force, fire and EMS service.
So I wasn't able to go to Monday's meeting, but I did check in with Eric and Eric Christensen. And we didn't realize we had back-to-back meetings and so we decided to cancel yesterday's meeting. Everybody was okay with that, but for the next meeting, Eric is going to be partnering with some folks to bring a presentation to the rest of the committee or rest of the task force about what a 28E agency is, from what I understand, maybe showcasing how some others in, in the state of Iowa have worked together with the city and the rural trustees and things like that. So I'm looking forward to that and that'll be on August 1st. At Weley at 6 o'clock.
Any questions?